All right. We've called the order, the committee of the whole for May 26th at 5:37 PM. Roll call.
Alder Persson's Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Capusta.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Can I get them all?
Who's to approve? Why not?
Second.
We typically, do you guys typically do?
No.
We're gonna skip that.
Well, we can. We can.
We can, but.
We just did.
Who am I to change? Approval of the minutes from April 14th, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to new business. Discuss proposed health insurance rate renewal and alternative plans.
Does anybody need to hear?
Yeah, it's what?
Nice.
So we do have Patty Yane here. This evening we'll go through. Thanks.
And as you're talking tonight, Sharon, can you take the microphone with you? Thank you.
I've got one.
Is it just this one, right? I'm good. Thank you.
I'm good. Except that last page, I'm sorry. Is that the one? Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Patty Yane with WPS, and I worked with Sharon in the city for a number of years. So we're very pleased to have your health insurance plan again. And I've been asked to just kind of go through the renewal, very high level, talk about some options that we've proposed to the city, because we always want to make sure we're providing you everything we can in terms of your interest to keep the cost down. So first and foremost, everyone has this packet. Sharon, do you want me to actually go through this, or just high level talk about the different alternatives?
What would you guys like, actually? It's your meeting.
I know we have one new alderman.
Yep.
I'm not sure if you would like us to go through, or if you had a chance to review it.
Well, we err in the side of more information than less.
Okay, certainly. All right. Just first to start out, I just want to say that we started out with the renewal process towards the end of April. We proposed to the city initially about a 5.5% increase. We were able to review additional information and then ultimately come back to a 3.5% increase. So that is the increase that would be on the table today for the current plan design. No benefit changes, no network changes, everything remains status quo. Okay? And that is what Sharon has outlined here on the first page in terms of the contribution structure and the different co-pay alternatives. So just kind of going through the plan itself, while what you're seeing here, the current structure for the city is a $3,000 deductible. There is an HRA on top of that, which means the city reimburses a portion of that deductible. What we have here is some different alternates. So Sharon, refresh my memory, what you did there. If you want to switch. Let's switch spots, because she laid this out, so I want to make sure that's explained correctly.
Right. So to the far right, you have the columns with the city costs versus the employee. So the city would be the 90%, employee would be 10%. So you can see, for the renewal, 3.5%, the city would actually absorb $60,402. Number two, which is also on page two, are different options to increase the premium contributions. Currently, we, the employees contribute 10%, and then you can see the cost impact if they were to rise 1%. So 10 to 11%, the employees. Go ahead.
Is that per employee, or is that?
That's in total.
Total.
Yes. So if you actually go to page two.
Why are you doing that? Sorry. Why are you doing that? Last year, I know you, I thought you had a comparison, what other communities were doing at the percentage per employee.
Yes, because we have a new alderman and new mayor.
Right.
We're basically bringing forward the same information from last year.
Okay. I just want to know the other communities are at 10 or 11% as well? Is that what it is?
I did not do a survey this year, if you want me to, because last year, the council asked that we basically bring back the same information.
Okay, that's fine.
Prior to doing any further research.
Is that something you'd like to see for future?
I think it was up to, I don't need that information, that's fine. Unless somebody else wants it. I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay. So on page two, you can see it's broken down by employee, monthly, and also the annual And at the very bottom, the annual impact to individual employees are broken down by single, limited family and the family plan. So you can see each percentage increment, what that would impact.
Sharon? If we, if we consider changing deductibles, how does that impact our utilization? How does that impact utilization?
The deductible in theory would, because the higher deductibles, members tend to incline toward the left. However, because it has an HRA, it doesn't impact in much ways. We would normally factor for that, because it would offset the reverse proportion of that deductible.
Okay.
It would depend on what the city would then turn towards that HRA. They might want to do an additional.
Has our utilization changed much between last year and this year?
It hasn't changed significantly, no. We have some higher planning, the mayor has some higher planning to come in the coming year. Hence, we will put it down less than a two year.
Thank you.
And then I think I'm gonna turn this next section over to you, because it's the actual co-pay alternatives. And it goes into the detail with out-of-pocket deductible.
I'm gonna have you, I think, flip to the, what would be the third page of your handout. Says number two at the top, employee premium contribution options. So we have proposed a couple of different alternatives for the city to consider, and these are all additional co-pay plans. So essentially, the same level of benefits, deductibles comes into plan, more major services, and then the employees would still have co-payments for their common services like office visits, emergency room, urgent care, and drugs. So what we have proposed in the first column where it says 1%, this plan. Help me out. Help me out, for Sharon. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. I'm on the wrong page. Go one more.
So when you say, when you say 1%, you're saying from 10 to 11% correct?
No. She's gonna be speaking to the co-pay.
I'm sorry, I'm actually on the next page where it says three at the top, where it says co-pay alternate plans.
Oh.
That was my fault.
Oh.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, so option one, again, is a very similar plan. In this plan structure, we're keeping the deductible the same at $3,000. We're keeping the out-of-pocket a little bit higher now. Instead of having a $3,500 out-of-pocket between that deductible and co-insurance, we've increased it to $4,000. So just incremental change there. The co-insurance remains 90, 90-70, so 10% for the employee in-network, 30% out-of-network. Our out-of-pocket, and if you remember the out-of-pocket from the past structure, that remains the same at 73-50. So that is, what that takes into consideration is your deductible, your 10% co-insurance, and all of the co-pays you could possibly have during the course of the year, rolled up to meet that 73-50. So that'd be a very difficult number, actually, to reach, because you have to have a lot of co-pays to get to that level. In this plan, we've also changed the office visit co-pay to a $25 primary and a $50 specialty co-pay, and that's pretty standard in the market these days. Your office visit co-pay levels are actually fairly, fairly competitive, actually, compared to other benefit plans. The ER co-pay would go to 300, and the RX co-pay would change just minimally to $10 for generic, $30 for preferred brand, and $60 for all other brand. So again, not much of a change in that plan. If you go then to the next column for option two, alternate two, here is where we actually increased the deductible now to 3,500. And again, because your out-of-pocket is gonna go up the same amount, but you're gonna be getting it on the actual deductible first versus incrementally through that co-insurance amount, the rates are a little bit more competitive. So again, you still have a $4,000 out-of-pocket versus the 3,500 today. And that out-of-pocket means your combination of your deductible and your co-insurance added together. For example, if a person had a $50,000 surgery, they are going to pay in this plan, or in the current plan, they'd pay $3,500. In this plan, they would pay $4,000. And then WPS would pay the remainder of that bill. Then for the balance of the year, where that maximum out-of-pocket comes into play at 73-50, we would add up all those office visit co-pays, drug co-pays, emergency room co-pay, if you have those, to get to that 73-50. So between the 4,000 and the 73-50, as you can see, that's a lot of co-pays to bridge that gap. Okay, in this plan, then, we kept the office visit co-pay the same at the 15 and 30. We kept the ER the same at 250, and we kept the drugs the same. So really, on option two, the only thing that we changed was the deductible and the resulting out-of-pocket going up by $500. And then on alternate three, again, deductible changes, and here we did a combination of changes. So your out-of-pocket, again, would go to that $4,000 for a single and 8,000 for a family, co-insurance remaining the same at 90 and 70. The maximum out-of-pocket remains the same, again, on all plans. And here, we also then did a combination with, again, that change in that office visit co-pay to the 25 and 50, $300 for emergency room, and then bumping that drug co-pay a little bit to 10, 30, and 60. And I want to note that on all plans, you'll see the $0 under Teladoc. We did include that in part of the renewal, in that 3.5% increase. So currently, Teladoc would be paid at $10, but there really isn't a lot of incentive for members to be using Teladoc, especially since your primary co-pay today is 15. So why would anyone really bother? So we're moving that to zero, and included in the Teladoc benefit is anything you would go in for, any acute type care, you know, sinus infection, ear infection, that type of thing, as well as we include dermatology and behavioral health in that. So very good benefit to have, especially now with all the COVID situation that's going on. So that's kind of a recap of the different co-pay options. So they're minimal changes, they don't drive a lot of premium savings, but we tried to keep it with as little disruption and to balance the amount of premium savings we could provide to the city. There's certainly numerous different alternatives we could, we could provide in combinations of your deductible and co-insurance and, you know, your co-payments as well. Any questions? Sure.
I always try to look back a little bit and see where we were and where we're going to. It appears that we picked up several more people on our insurance plan this year. When we looked at the numbers last year, we looked at about a 1 point. Bear with me, there's too many numbers here.
What page are you looking at?
1.535. I'm looking at last year's.
Okay.
1.535. And that was our renewal as of January, or excuse me, July 1st, 2019. And now we're looking at a renewal rate this July of 1.7 million. So we've got, you know, significant difference because we picked up more employees. So we went from 32 family, I think, to 38. And we didn't increase our FTEs at all, we just increased more people on the insurance plans, correct? Okay. Just, again, to note that we went from, we went up about 260,000 from the numbers that we looked at last year to this year, only because we picked up more people on the program, which to me is significant. As far as I'm concerned, I want to provide a program that is fair to the employee, fair to the taxpayer. It appears to me, this is just my own reaction to this, is changing of the deductibles, there's not significant changes in the premiums, either for the city or for the employee.
There is not, especially when we do look at the fact that the city does the HRA, and we know that because there is a significant portion of the deductible that does get reimbursed, in a sense, that does impact the utilization. Just moving your office visit co-pays by $5 or $10 doesn't really do that much either. So you do, the city does have a very competitive benefit, and there are other things we could do to bring the cost down, but that is really going to be then impacting co-insurance. You would have to go to more of an 80-20 co-insurance.
True.
So the employee pays 20% instead of their current 10. You might have to, you know, up the out-of-pocket a little bit more. Today, honestly, most employers, or many employers that we have are quote, will have a much higher out-of-pocket than 3,500 or 4,000. They'll be, you know, in that $6,000 range, if not all the way to straight 73-50, which is the, which was a prior ACA limit.
Well, my concern is when we, when we fool around with deductibles and out-of-pockets, our utilization cost has got to rise, which, right now, we contribute about $136,000 in utilization above and beyond the premiums. And if we go to HSA, even though we wipe that out, we're increasing the cost by depositing money into those HSAs. So there's another $200,000 difference. So I guess in a nutshell, and I'll leave this up to everyone else, is I think we have to seriously take a look at the participation percentages. Private sector, public sector, I know there's a big difference. In the public, private sector, you're probably looking at 30% premium by the employee.
25 to 30, probably, yes. It's a pretty standard number.
And here we're looking at 10. So something to consider.
I was, I was kind of gonna mention that, too. People I've talked to, our companies are contributing 70 to 80%, and here we are at 90%. Again, that's just throwing that out there from the business end. So you brought it up, I will second that. That's a valid comment that I echo, so.
One thing I do want to point out on that, though, is, for one, look at our public works department. We are competing with private construction to keep those people, they are paid, they could, almost any of them could leave tomorrow, make $10 an hour or more, but they're staying because of the benefits.
Oh, sure.
Sure.
And then.
Other, other community or governments around us, too.
Well, I agree. And you're also competing with other communities, what they pay. And a big chunk of our workforce is also the police department, so you're looking at comps of what other police departments are paying, and we're probably, you know, within a few percent of that.
Do we have those? Again, I'm new, so if I'm asking questions, it already came up.
Ask, ask away.
Yeah, I mean, did we pull those to say, hey, the 90-10 comparable to other cities? Like, do we have that somewhere?
We can get it. Yeah.
And it's comparable. I mean, from the things we've seen in the past, it's a very comparable number. I think it ran as high as 15% in some communities and as low as zero in other communities. So it's right in the groove.
Yeah, and I think we talked about this last year, the contribution from, you know, that 10% going up a point or so, but it was, it didn't really make that much of a difference. So if I understand this correctly, if we leave it the way it is, our premiums go up $60,000 roughly. That's on top of the new employees, plus we just had, talked about possibly more, another new full-time employee, so. And if we take 1% or say from 10 to 11, we'll basically take that from 60 to 40,000, right? So that's, so and then if I understand this correctly, again, if we go into option number one, what's the 42,000 savings, total reduction? How does that compare? Where am I pulling that number from? If, is that, is that from the 60,000, 42,000 off?
Yes.
So it would be a $20,000 increase?
Correct. Comparing the renewal to the alternative.
So we could almost, not saying we should, but we can almost look at doing 1% at 20,000 and moving to option one at 42,000, and we're pretty close to breaking even for the year with adding new employees. But with that, that's a percent out of everybody's paycheck. And it changes the benefits on, I think you said, out-of-pocket to 4,000, 9,000 for 35 to 75, 8, 18,000. I mean, it's not drastic, because most of us stays, I mean, the co-pays are 15, 20, or 25 to 50 for 15, 30, 250 to 300. I'm running down the line here, so, and even on the bottom, it says highest 60, so it's five bucks more. So that's not drastic. The only problem is, is this a good time to really start looking at people's benefits with everything going on? That's, that's the question we have to, we have to answer. I mean, to put an extra percent on and move them to a little bit higher deductible is not outrageous in today's times, but with all the things going on in people's work and personal lives right now, we've got, we gotta answer that question as well, so. Any other comments?
For, for me, I'd be, I'd be reluctant to change deductibles and out-of-pockets, because it's gonna affect our utilization.
Well, if you go to option one, you think that'll, that'll make a big difference, too? Because that's really like nothing, because we have the money that covers the.
Well, it goes up $500 for an in-network, single person, $1,000 for an in-network, family person. But keep in mind, our utilization, that's where our utilization comes from.
That's a 42,000 savings. That's what got my.
On that end, but then, if we're only, so the money that we're putting aside that we're reimbursing, now that's gonna go up because more people.
Sure.
Right, right, I understand that.
Taking it from one pile and taking it from another. Right, because right now, we're only, what'd you say, we're about, what percentage of our 10%? No, not the co-pay, I mean of the reimbursement.
30.
So we're paying about, we're using about 35% of the actual pot of money that we budget, or that we have out there.
Do we know how much that pot of money is? I mean, if it goes up 5% or 10%?
That's a bad term, I'm sorry, it's not a pot.
I know what you're saying. The escrow account, but anyway.
But.
I mean, that could be a mine, that could be a mine.
But you figure, you know, if you're, if you're putting aside or offering a benefit of 3,000, just round numbers, is it 3 or 3,500 for the HRA?
For the HRA?
Yeah.
We have 25 or 27,50 for single, so 250 the employee pays for, and then 500.
But the more you increase, the more you're gonna be taking out of that right now. So if you're taking, if you're increasing.
No, I understand that.
So.
That's why I said it might not be a real good time to do this, you know?
So, I mean, I was gonna let you guys talk, but my recommendation on this whole thing is, for one, I like the idea of a January renewal versus July. I would really like to have some serious conversations with the school district on joining their self-insurance plan. We could keep benefit levels the same. I'm not sure if it'll work or not, it depends how they let us enter the program. If they have us enter as, we're our own pool within theirs, there's not gonna be, for one, we don't have enough bodies for that. But if they let us enter as part of their pool, then there could be real savings. For instance, their policy, their, their plan is, at the very least, similar to ours, probably a little better. They're paying about 2,000, 2,100 for a family plan, ours is around 28, 26 to 28, you know? So, but I can't do that overnight, that's gonna take some time. So my recommendation is to keep the status quo, let us investigate that, and if we're gonna make a change, we can make it in January, otherwise, we just continue, we come back to you, and you can just say, continue with this or make the change.
So from an insurer's standpoint, does that work? I mean, can we?
I will just comment, it would be very tricky. You're not a common employer.
Which part?
It depends on how a reinsurance contract would want to structure that.
So WACasha does it with their school and city right now, I believe.
I mean, changing.
The contract date?
So as contract date, I mean, you can answer this, but I can, we have a premium and you can quit at any time.
That's true. You can change your anniversary date, you can re-look at this all in January, yes, absolutely. From an insurance perspective, we prefer groups to be off the January cycle, because roughly 80% of the business renews on January, and quite frankly, you probably get better service when you're off the January cycle, but hey, it is what it is, we're used to it.
You could make it October, we could make it.
You could make it any date.
Having it, having it right now, when you have a new executive coming in on, you know, this three-year cycle, you never know who's gonna be sitting in the seat. You've got 30 days to come in and make recommendations and look at everything, and you've got budgets starting and everything else, it's just not a good date for us to be doing it at. And maybe we'll continue it at that, but right now, is what I'm asking for, is give us some time to look, some other options, we can always change later.
I'm in favor of that, I'm fine with that.
Sharon, talk about that.
You know, we may come back and say, this makes sense, what we're doing, and we'll give you the real numbers or what happens, but it gives us time to look at it, and look at it in depth.
So if I'm clear, I just, so I understand, is that you're saying that, let's just go with the 3.5% renewal across the board?
Full status quo.
No changes in, in percentages or anything at this point? I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Yeah.
We need a motion on that?
If, if I could just comment one thing?
Yes.
If that'd be okay? One thing that isn't in your packet to keep in mind, for now, future, obviously not now, but more future state, obviously, at this point. With the Arise Network that we offer, we looked at that, it's a very good fit for the city. It does create some disruption, but it is something to consider also as another alternative, rather than changing plan designs. The Arise Network includes, essentially in the Milwaukee market, includes all major provider systems, with the exception of Freiterd and Medical College. Is it, it's intended to be a more narrowed, focused network. So we looked at your provider utilization. Freiterd is there generally because of high-cost claimants, we all know that, that's where people are going to go for care. But one unique thing that we can offer the city is that you can dual-opt those two networks. So it creates an opportunity for those that want to have a lower cost, lower price point on their employee contribution. That's an option for those, and then the people that need that broader network, which, again, would really be for Freiterd and Medical College, they could continue with that and just buy up at the higher premium levels. So just something to keep in mind, or I should say, people can buy down, so to speak, to that, to that Arise Network. So within this area, it's, it's different than what we've looked at in the past, because in March, we added the Ascension system. So for all practical purposes, the providers that you're using today, the majority, 75% of your utilization was within the Arise Network. So that's pretty good numbers. So all of your Aurora providers, your Pro Health providers, Ascension, which we all would know as Columbia and St., Columbia-St. Mary's in Wheaton, and then Children's Hospital and UW Health are in there, in this particular geography. So it is throughout the state, but just keep that another option in mind, that you could do it kind of as a buy-down approach.
I do like the cafeteria idea, though, that, that's a good plan, I like that.
And that's definitely something that will be considered. Sharon and I had talked about that, as far as maybe cafeteria and maybe change the percentages. If you go with one, your percentage will stay at this. If you go with the more expensive one, then, you know, you might pay a higher percentage.
Makes sense.
And it becomes choice. And she is right, I looked at that, and, you know, Freiterd, Medical College was in there, weren't they?
No. Freiterd and Medical College are the two systems that are out. Children's is in.
Children's was in, okay, that was it, yeah.
Memorial Lutheran, that's what you had Freiterd.
And Community Memorial is part of Freiterd, so they're, they're out as well.
They're out of it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm just looking at the, maybe I'm looking at a different chart here.
I don't know. I have it on my phone.
That's fine, that's fine.
Anyway, so just something to consider, because it was a change in March of this year, so I do, we did want to make sure that the city was aware of that, was gonna be a better fit for you.
Yeah, and I just want to point out, the chart that you did give us, has Freiterd is listed as not in-network, Medical College of Wisconsin is listed as being in-network.
That could be because of a referral basis that we looked at with that particular, those particular claims. There are a subset of Medical College providers, not to get too complicated. It can do. There's a subset of Medical College providers that are affiliated with children's.
Okay.
So if they're affiliated with children's, that the specialist with children's, then they will be in-network. But if I wanted to go see an eye, the eye clinic at Freiterd, it would be out of-network.
Okay.
As an example.
That's a good distinction, okay. Any other questions on this? So, can I have a motion from someone to stick with the status quo for now? Do you want to give us a date that we have to come back by, or do we get until, when do you want to see us back by?
When do you think?
I gotta, I, preliminary discussions with, like, to the point where I've sent an email and a follow-up to the district as far as what we need to get back and forth, so we're so early right now, we're both in the beginning verse. I'd like to get through budget first, quite honestly, and I'm sure Sharon would too.
So, we're probably looking at November, December?
Yeah.
Probably November.
Yeah, if we could do it, would that work?
If you are contemplating a change, we probably should come over...
Probably before then, so let's say October.
Probably October, since late September.
October 1st.
Mm-hmm.
September, October, we'll have something.
Well, with that date, I'll make whatever the mayor's motion was, almost like a winner.
Mayor doesn't know, mayor doesn't know what his motion was.
I'll second.
We'll bring something back in the third quarter. Any further, we have a motion, we have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, financial impact of COVID-19.
So, for this item, I actually included the Finance Department Quarterly Report, which provides status updates to various projects going on within the department, and this also includes the year-end operating results as well as first quarter. And the good news is, is that 2019 ended the year with approximately a $500,000 surplus. And as for the first quarter, so far, it doesn't appear we're going to have any significant impact, with the exception of some revenue reductions in the Court Department and liquor licenses, and that should be covered by contingency. So, so far, so good.
You mean, you're talking contingency from federal or state money?
No, we have a $80,000 contingency.
Oh, that way? Plus, we also have a chance to apply for money?
Actually, Jenny and I have participated in the webinars, and we really don't qualify at this point because of the expenditure amount and the type of expenses we've incurred. The biggest one was the envelopes for the absentee ballots.
So, some of the money that they're talking about from, like, the CARES Act coming up, they're going to have, I think they're doing two. The first one are for non-entitlement communities, which we don't qualify. And then the second batch, entitlement communities can apply, but so can everyone else, and there's a limited amount of money on each of them, very limited scope. Have some ideas where maybe we could have some of our budget applied towards it through an application grant, but it's, yeah.
And the administrative work is a nightmare, I've been through FEMA, so sometimes it's not worth it.
We're basically uncertain what's going to happen with the fall election in regards to any...
Well, I have been hearing that the Wisconsin Election Commission may supply the envelopes, which would be wonderful, so then our budget would be flat, because right now, we're creeping up.
The envelopes, are you, you're talking about?
The absentee ballot.
Mailing expense too, yeah. Delivery expenses.
Well, would that include the postage on it, that they would include, right? Oh, that would be huge, okay.
That's big, that's big.
So, keep your fingers crossed.
So, what do you project for Parks and Recreation?
What was that?
Parks and Recreation is going to take a hit this year.
They are.
I'm assuming.
It's way too early.
300?
Do you have any idea, Parks and Rec?
I mean, it'd be throwing a dart.
It's too early.
It's throwing a dart at a wall at this point, because, I mean, for one, the book just came out.
Yeah, I'd say at least 150.
Registration started today.
But then the expenditures, we're not going to incur those either, so it's kind of a wash.
Just wanted to see if there was a number.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? All right, moving on to discussion regarding enforcement process of Chapter 400 zoning violations specific to outside storage, and I asked this to be on here mainly because I get copied on every, you know, when your constituents call and complain about something and you guys follow up on that complaint, the letter goes out to your, our constituents and the follow-up, and I get copied on all those, and eventually, the person usually gets mad and then calls me. In this particular case, didn't happen, but it has, this particular one has to do with storage of an RV, of RV and travel trailers on their property. My concern with this particular one is, I get copied on the emails, going back and forth in conversation, and I'm just kind of sitting back looking at them. Finally, the guy goes, well, look at my property, and he sends a picture, and this guy's got this, you know, immaculately kept property, and he's got, you know, what I would probably guess is like a $75,000 travel trailer on his driveway, which looks really nice, he doesn't live in an area with an HOA, and he's being told he can't have this there, which that would be fine if we enforce this uniformly, but all of us know, you can drive around this community, almost any main road, and you're going to see two to three of these that aren't being told they can't keep them in their front yard. But it's based on a complaint from an alderman, and an alderman's complaint is usually from a constituent, and there's different ways you guys can handle this, I mean, but one of my thoughts on this is, if we're not going to uniformly, if we're not going to enforce these uniformly, I have problems enforcing it at all. Now, maybe we will, and my other, my other thought on this is, if this stuff really bothers you, you should live in an area, you should live in a subdivision has an HOA where it's enforced from that.
Well, actually, the HOA can't, the city overtakes that, so there's not much enforcement.
Oh, sure, no, an HOA definitely can.
Yeah.
There's really not much enforcement.
I'll tell you, Lake Forest, you'd have one there for a couple hours before they would bring in an endorsement or filing in Waukesha County.
Well, they're getting weaker and weaker, and a lot of them aren't even really viable other than cutting common grounds, grass and stuff like that. I think that we need to have something in place, and we need to keep a guideline in place. I mean, we just can't cut it out, it's because some people get enforced and some don't. We're managing by complaint, and that's not a bad thing, because if the neighbors are happy and things are good and it looks nice, it's a good thing. If it doesn't look good and the neighbors are not happy, it's a bad thing, and, and if we don't enforce it, the ones that are really bad are going to even get worse. And we should not be parking stuff in front of homes, we should be using the sides and using the zoning and planning guidelines or putting down cement or gravel on the sides of the property and putting it on there rather than having stick out in front of your house. I mean, I have a lot of issues in my area, and all the way down to garbage cans is one of the things I like to get listed on here as well, because people are leaving their garbage cans at the end of the drive for months at a time, piling garbage up around them, and if they feel like it, sometimes they pull it up to their garage and leave it in front of there for, you know, for the whole time, and they pile garbage all around that, and this is the front of houses, what everybody's got to look at. So, if I was a neighbor across the street and I want to sell my property, and I look and I have an open house and people come over and they look at this, and this person's been there for years, paying our, paying good taxes to live here, love living out here, but it's time for them to move, and they have an open house, and people come over and they see that, what are they, what are they going to think? Can I see, you want how much for this house? I wouldn't live there, I wouldn't pay that for this. So, you decrease the value of the properties or the chance of selling, or maybe you're inviting other people to come in and do the exact same thing. So, we have garages, we have zoning things that they can build other buildings within the permitted guidelines. Maybe you should store your stuff at a storage site, that's why they have storage sites. So, I have a problem, I mean, homeowners have property rights, I agree with that 100%, but I think the front of the house should be as clean as possible without any, any obstructions at all. And I said, as far down as, as little as garbage cans is something I'd like to actually add to this. They should be pulled back within 24 hours of pickup, they shouldn't be left in front of the house, they can put them on the side or seal them somehow or whatever, but trailers, I mean, you'll go by, there's multiple trailers, there's multiple campers, there's multiple vehicles, and then they open the garage and it's full of whatever, they can't even put anything in their garages. So, there's a lot of reasons why to have this.
I don't disagree with some of what you said, but what I'm not, I'm not talking about garbage cans and, you know, keeping other rubbish or anything else, and I'm not talking about completely removing this. What I'm talking about is, we need to look at the ordinance, and I, one of the things I would look at would be maybe allowing campers...
There's got to be a distinguish between them, I think.
Right, there is, and you can, you can do that, and also put a timeframe on it.
There is a timeframe on campers, right, Adam?
Mr. Wolf, please wait, I'm talking. There is a timeframe on, we could put a timeframe on it from like April 30th to October 1st or whatever dates you wanted, but I'll be honest, if we don't start enforcing this uniformly, I'm not going to have staff enforcing it at all, so...
Well, that's a crazy idea.
We, we need to, we need to find a way of getting consistent with this, because we're not.
I think we've got to distinguish between, you know, junk and something that's actually worth of value. You know, a lot of these travel trailers and campers and boats are worth more than the neighbor who has three cars parked in their driveway. But yet, it's okay to park a $500 car in your driveway, but not an $80,000 travel trailer or an $80,000 boat or a $100,000 boat. To me, that just doesn't make, make sense, we have to distinguish between those, you know, and I don't think you're allowed to have work vehicles in your driveway, correct?
No, you can.
You can?
Yeah.
Well...
With subdivisions, you can't, you can't have commercial trucks.
Business, if you have a business out of your house.
But you could have a van, a work van.
Or what about a commercial trailers?
I don't believe so.
No.
Adam?
If it's attached to the personal truck and it's under $10,000 household, then yes.
So, I think we have to have a distinguish between them or cars that are being worked on, that's another thing. You see, you see that where people are working on their cars in the driveway and just leave it out there all summer. I do think we have to distinguish between something that's worth some value or something that isn't. If you can park a $500 car in your driveway, I don't see any reason why we can't park a camper or a boat or a travel trailer in your driveway.
Alderman Wolf?
Well, the difference is, does a $500 car come and go, or does it sit there? That's another thing you have to figure out, because the person's driving it and using it, or a camper's sitting there all the time. It's in people's view, it's in the way, you have the boats, the exact same thing.
Because it's larger.
That's a, and that's, that's why it shouldn't be in front of a building. It shouldn't, it should be offset and put on gravel or cement within the, within the zoning codes. It should, we should keep the front of the homes nice and beautiful. We, we're at, we're at the point right now of trying to fix something that's not broken. These things are in, in place for a reason, and you get to an area like my district where it might be smaller homes and stuff, this is a real big problem. And you get to an area that have bigger homes and people have more money and they have more land, it's not, it's more acceptable, but when you start getting houses that you put these in front of and the neighbors can't see through the yards, and sometimes they're out there because people are hiding stuff behind it and piling up stuff, and there's a lot of reasons why we shouldn't have this, that's why it's there in the first place. Again, we're trying to fix something that's not broken.
Any wings from this side of the table?
No.
Yes.
Well, like in my neighborhood, there's a lot of very small lots, and people are limited then what they can possess even if you put those kind of rules on us, because there's no place to park it at all then, even temporarily. I like to bring my camper home, put it in my driveway.
But it's already temporary, you can do that.
Yeah, but you got to honor that, yeah, and I would advocate something for not full year, yes, but, you know, as, I don't know what exactly our ordinance now says, but I believe you have summertime privileges to some degree, don't we?
There's a time limit, what is the time limit, right?
No.
No, there's no, it's not allowed.
Temporary? Okay, then I'll, I'll take this from another angle, unless our community is boats and campers and stuff is common to this community, people should have a right to them. But, but...
Alderman Kavaki?
I don't really have an objection to managing by complaint, because some areas are acceptable. And from what Alderman Englehart said is that we've got a lot of boats, a lot of campers in our, in our community. If it does pose a problem, the problem gets surfaced, but the uniformity, to me, comes in with, I don't like my neighbor, and he's got something in his driveway, and I'm going to get him, but unfortunately, that's, that's the way the situation is. As far as value, I, I can't see we go by value, what's, what's, what's the value of a car, what's the value of this? As long as it's uniform, uniformly done, uniformly adhered to, I don't have a problem with the ordinance.
Mike, and I'll let Mr. Alderman Wolf speak next. That's why I suggest putting a timeframe on that this is only allowed between certain dates, because you don't have the camper that's sitting there for three years, hasn't been used, you got everything hiding behind it, beyond that, everything they're hiding behind it does now issue a, cause a violation anyway, but it, it typically, if you're going to put a camper in storage for the winter and you bring it out, you're going to use it, or you're not going to bring it out of storage, you know, so...
And I think most neighbors see that, they see stuff come and go and moving boats back and forth, and, you know, most neighbors accept things, it's just that if we fix something like this, I think we're going to create more problems for ourselves. I think the manage by complaint is the best rule, things are in place, and it keeps people from leaving these things long-term. I don't know what brought this up or why we brought this up, but actually, I would be in more favor of making it more stricter, if you want to go, in my opinion, I mean, you want to loosen it, I want to tighten it.
I want uniformity is what I...
Here's, here's my goal. My goal is, I want a clean, safe place to live, and if you don't want a clean place, then let people park wherever they want, wherever they want, and do whatever they want, and get rid of the zoning and planning, because we don't need them.
And, and I think that's an overexaggeration, because...
Well, it's a point, we're fixing something that's not broken.
One speaker at a time.
I was, I was speaking.
One speaker at a time.
I was speaking.
I'm one speaker...
I was speaking, and you interrupted me, Rick, so...
Oh, you stopped.
If you want to play this game, I can interrupt you all night, okay?
Are we done?
If you're done.
Are we done?
If you're done.
I can turn off your mic.
Go ahead, I can talk loud.
All right.
Listen, Rick, you interrupted me, so don't, don't play that game, don't play that game.
We're adjourned, we're taking a break. Continuing on, Alderman Wolf, do you want to continue with what you were saying?
No, I'm good, we're good, I apologize and we'll just keep going.
All right. So, my, go on.
I just got one comment. This did happen in my district, I understand that, that is, it was, in my personal opinion, it was not unsightly, however, that same neighborhood, two years ago, it happened at a different home, and the trailer or the camper was not as nice. Where do we draw the line on what's okay and what's not? To me, that's, that's why I think we're kind of leaning towards the, by complaint, and are they always, you know, are they always what we would consider to be a complainable deal? Probably not, but how else do we do it? I don't know.
Most of the time, when I'm seeing complaints, and, and, you know, Alderman Wolf had brought it up, that he's got problems in his district, so we had the letter going out for one in your district, and we had one going out for your district, and it looked, one looked like Sanford and Son, one, one, one looked like, you know, an upscale community would look like. No comparison, but where the difference, where I saw the two were, is they had an old, you know, 20, probably a 20-year-old travel trailer there, but that probably wouldn't have been the issue if it wasn't the, probably two tons of garbage packed around the thing and everything else, which would generate a complaint by...
Multiple, multiple trailers.
In and of itself, so, in for, you know, we could, we can allow the trailer, we just can't allow the junk around it and the flat tires and everything else. You know, it's got, we have a green up Musquee, we, Alderman Hamel had brought up the fact of, you know, you can have a junky car in your front yard, and that's okay. Well, if it's in a, in a state of repair that it's not usable, that would generate a complaint, we can, you know, I don't know if we can word an ordinance on, on that way, but I would think we can, since we do it with cars and everything else, it's got...
We have it with junk cars, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you got a junk trailer, you can't, you can't allow it.
But you have to have a license and register, correct?
Well, the travel trailers don't.
No, I mean, the auto.
Got to be operable.
Right.
Auto's got to be operable.
So...
I don't think the driveway is meant to be year-round storage during the season.
No, I agree, right.
You know, during the season, yeah, you know, if people are going camping every weekend or taking the boat out every weekend, it's a pain to go pick it up from storage, and most of these travel trailers won't fit in their garage. So, I think, you know, during the season, I think that should be allowable if we distinguish what time of year that is, you know, April through October or something like that, you know, I don't see a problem with that, and it has to be operable, it can't be filled up with, you know, storage for your garbage and junk that just sits there for weeks on end.
Alderman Wolf?
And I, and I think you're on to something to a point, because people only store in winter months, I mean, most people or some people, some don't, but they do take them out, but you still, some people take them out and they just sit there too as well, so So, that's, that's a tough thing to put a timeline. I'm, I'm still going to manage by complaint. And like I said, if, if it was up to me, I would like to see them even more stricter. I'm all about a clean city, a clean-looking city. And actually, I handle a lot of these complaints myself. When they come in, I don't even send them over to planning. I go and knock on their doors and ask these people, "What are you doing? What's going on?" You know, this, I tell them what the, what the city is going to do, they're going to get a letter in 10 days, and usually that does it with most people, but some, some people, you just have to leave the things in place and go, and let it, let the system work. And, and unfortunately, the government doesn't move too fast. So, when you do have a problem, it, it lingers for a while, and it, because you got to go through the process, and you have to treat everybody the same, and, and there's just, you know, and then people start playing shell games. They move this, they cover that, then they ask for extensions, and, and that one problem, because we're making it easy for certain months for things to happen, will turn into another year. So, I, I think we're just dealing with something that we don't need to fix at this point. I'd be real careful on rewording all this and, and looking at it. I, I know it's going to make my job harder, and it's going to make a lot of people more angry in my district that if we allow more things to happen.
Could I just jump in for a second?
I'd like to invite.
Just to kind of give you a, a different perspective. I understand what you're all saying about by complaint, and I appreciate that and I respect that. But none of you guys are here when these come to court. I'm here when they come to court. And people get really, really mad about this kind of stuff when they're cited, saying that, you know, this isn't stored, I'm not storing it, I'm using it every day. And so, lots of people, and, and I, I won't put it past some people, will look at me and say, "How come I got cited and the guy down the block didn't?" And I look at him and I say, "Because the guy down the block, there was no complaint about that." So, the next thing the guy says to me is, "Look, I'm going to drive the entire city, and I'm going to find all of the ones that are out of compliance, and I'm going to make a complaint." And I know that sounds crazy, but someday, I won't put it past the guy who gets mad enough at the system and at me, that he's going to do that. And that's going to be a lot of work on staff and a lot of work on the court to try to manage these types of things. So, just from the court perspective, I want to kind of lay that out for you, that that's something that could really happen.
But you don't want, but you don't, but you don't want the city to look like a junkyard?
Right.
And I don't either.
I mean, there's, there's, there's something in between this whole thing that, and I understand that that's the, that's the, and people that have complained, that I've spoken with, have said the same thing to me, that I'm going to complain. Well, you have that, certainly have that right, but, you know, that's.
Well, and we're calling it storage, and I don't see a RV or recreational vehicle on your property that you're pretty much using every weekend. I don't see that as being a storage issue. I think the idea of putting times on this, like if you've got your, your recreational